All right. I'd like to ask you all to join me in prayer. Almighty and ever-living God, source of all wisdom and understanding, be present with those who take counsel for the renewal and mission of your church. Teach us in all things to seek first your honor and glory. Guide us to perceive what is right and grant us both the courage to pursue it and the grace to accomplish it through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. This time, I'll call the meeting to order and begin with citizen communication. And Amanda, I think that we have two, Ms. Cruz and Ms. Arce, that want to speak on Agenda Item Four, so we'll wait and call them at the, I think that's public for public comment. Can we do that?
Sure.
Call them on item number four.
So then, let me go ahead and follow with the next one, Mayor. Raymond Reyes, 706 Nun, Tucker Drive.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor Raymond Reyes, 706 Nun, Tucker Drive. Again, I'm just here to reemphasize the positive things that should keep going. There's still a bit of lacking in some areas that I think over time should be addressed. One of those things, I believe, and I'm kind of going through it, is not everybody in all the departments apparently seem to be on the same page on certain things. You know, but it's always a work in progress. Some of those said departments are working with me, which is always a good thing and stuff. Hopefully, we should have a positive outcome in the end, which I think we will. And there's a lot of other things that are going on within the city and stuff. Again, as long as we're making progress in the right direction, not just for certain individuals, but the citizens of Harlingen as a whole, I think it'll be beneficial for everybody in the long run. You can't always make everybody happy. I've realized this in business myself. But always putting your best foot forward will always hopefully give you the best outcome. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you.
The next one is Ron Lozano, 2410 Riverside Drive.
Good afternoon. Baxter is Harlingen's smallest edifice. Mayor Boswell recently stated he championed its renovation. No, he consistently made efforts to raise the ISO. He suggests Harlingen has a better rate of growth than McAllen or Brownsville or Edinburgh, or other cities in Hidalgo metropolitan area. But when he took office, only two of those cities had a larger population rather than five. And projections are another city is soon to be larger if he remains. So facts being facts, we recognize six cities are eclipsing not only in population but decent job creation. A breadwinner recognizes those issues. DHS pays more than 40%. Immediately after the forum he had with Mr. Pulvita, I asked one of those people that served in public safety, and he said, well, yes, everybody would try to provide for their family. And if you're getting 40% more to start, here in our area, there's a gravitation towards going towards the federal jobs. And that's been going on for 17 years, as he stated his 4.4% rate. That doesn't really compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. An assertion that someone built at the airport and kept on building after building is unsubstantiated. His lack of veracity may be most telling. In a noble issue, he pushed in seizing smoking in bars. Most attributed this to his own family's suffering. So even where he's done well, because of this lack of veracity, he undercuts his own efforts. So hopefully, we can get back to honoring the office of mayor. And it starts by setting an example like scouting. Thank you.
The next one is Mr. Sam Lozano. I don't know if he's here.
Mayor, welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Really? Do you really mean it? With a straight face, with a smile?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, in my many years, being with the city, attending a few commission meetings, never, never, but never did I witness what I witnessed on TV, actions or doing that happened here in this noble hall where people can exchange views without going to extreme, taking away something to communicate with, which was unbecoming of a city commission and definitely not that of a mayor. And I say mayor definitely because I myself served in many, not as many years as you as mayor, but I put my time where it was needed to get things moving in this beautiful city of Harlingen. And at 66, a couple of people would ask, why are you still here as a fellow? There's still things that have to be done, and definitely under this administration, mainly the mayor, and this is who I'm speaking to. There was no need in going to extreme, as I witnessed on TV and numerous people calling, do you tolerate those things? No, but what can I do? What can I do? But here I am, defending actions that were taken by this city commission and mainly the mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
So the next item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 11th through the 15th, 2022, as Community Development Block Grant Week. So if there are members of our CDPG board here, I'd like them to join me over here so they can hear this proclamation. Well, we get to do this every year. I think it's important to do it. Whereas the week of April 11th, 2022, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Home Theater. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has as its primary objective the development and viability of urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income. Whereas the home program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, and affordable housing opportunities for low and moderate income persons. And whereas the City of Harlingen receives a direct allocation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually to provide resources to a wide variety of community development activities and principally benefit low and moderate income persons, including the elderly and the children. Whereas in our community and in communities throughout the nation, 47 years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding and 27 years of home program funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. Now, therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, should hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through April 15th as Community Development Block Grant Week in support of this valued program that has made a tremendous contribution to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality for our community. So congratulations to you all. I want to especially recognize our board members here tonight and all the board members on the CDPG board. You all spend countless hours every year going through a difficult process to determine how to allocate these funds. And we greatly appreciate your volunteer efforts, everything that you do to help in that process. It's not always an easy decision. Sometimes the city commission comes in here and second guesses you. But, you know, you all do a great job, a fantastic job, and we really appreciate everything that you all do.
We'd like to acknowledge the staff also. You have an awesome, awesome staff. If it wasn't for the staff, we wouldn't be able to do our job.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Thanks. And then we're going to pass on, we're going to, we've rescheduled the second proclamation and presentation, right?
Yes, sir. The coach could not be here. They're actually at another track meet, so they'll be back hopefully next week. Also, I'd like to have Craig Cook, our Assistant City Manager for External Services, introduce our new member to the staff, our city engineer.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce our new city engineer, Luis Vargas. Luis comes to us from the City of Corpus Christi after about 10 years. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering, and he's currently working on finishing up a Bachelor's of Science in electrical engineering. He received his P license in 2019 here in Texas, and I'd like you to welcome Luis. Luis, you want to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Luis Vargas. I am originally from Brownsville, Texas. I was raised in Matamoros. I went to UT Penn Am, which is, that was about 10 years ago. As you know, now is UTRGV. I, like Mr. Cook said, have a Bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, a professional engineering license, and working towards an electrical engineering. And you might wonder, well, where's the civil engineering, right? So I worked with the City of Corpus Christi for about 10 years, and mainly in the water and wastewater departments. About half of my career there was in engineering services, where I had the opportunity to be involved in stormwater, streets, solid waste, and public facilities projects. I have family in the valley. My wife has family in the valley as well. We're very, very happy to be here. We're happy to be back home and very excited about the job and looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, welcome to Harlingen. Glad to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of the regular city commission meeting minutes of November 17th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, as there are motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item three is the consent agenda items A through I. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item four is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential mobile home MH District to residential duplex R2 District for a 0.572 acre tract being all of Lot 6 and 0.113 acres out of Lot 7, JH West subdivision located at 1605 North 7th Street, applicant Mario and Norma Linnam. Javier?
Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. This is our rezoning request at the corner of 7th Street and Village Avenue. This is across the street from Harlingen High School. Under the request is to change the zoning from mobile home district to duplex. That's a survey of the property. There's a building, an existing building at the site. According to the applicant, it used to be a commercial building. That's the aerial photo. It shows the building that is located there, 7th Street, Village Drive, Harlingen High School across the street. And these are the photos of the property from 7th Street and from Village Drive. The building is in disrepair. The applicants want to restore it and convert the building into a duplex. And that's the zoning is a mobile home district. There's a mobile home subdivision to the west, and then the rest is all single-family residential zoning. And then mobile home zoning to the south. In the land use plan equals for low-density residential, this is a duplex zoning is in line with the comprehensive plan. We did receive a petition in opposition to the rezoning request that is in your pocket. And it was, this map shows the property owners that signed the petition, which is mostly the subdivision carry corner from the property. But 7% of the notification area signed the petition, so that does not trigger a supermajority vote for the rezoning to go through. And that's the calculation for the petition, so it's 7% of the notification area. The Planning and Zoning Commission held the public hearing on March 23rd, evaluated the petition. No one spoke in opposition during the public hearing. And after some discussion with the applicants, they voted unanimously approval of the rezoning with a 5 to 0 vote.
Sir, did you respond to the lady who was sending all the emails and the correspondence from the people that were in opposition of this?
Yes.
Because she specifically spoke to the fact that they could not attend the meetings because of the time of the meetings. And just because, just because they couldn't attend the meeting and they couldn't vote, it doesn't mean that there wasn't opposition. And it's almost, again, it brings you back to the, it brings me back to the issue we had with the F Street, with the F Street and the recycling center, where you had people opposing, and it was quite a bit of people. And, you know, the commission saying, you know, we need to, you know, listen to the community and listen to the people. And just the emails that I got of the number of people that backed up that, the one particular lady that was in opposition of it, I don't know what the percentage of it is, or I don't know how you're defining the percentage. How are you coming up with that number if you go back to that man?
This is a subject property. So this is, the dash line is 200 feet all around, right?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The dash line is 200 feet around the property.
Right.
So the state law says it's within the notification area. So these are the property owners that signed the petition within the notification area. And then we include the half the right-of-way. So the calculations are based on the notification area, which is 7%. These people that signed the petition here and half the right-of-way here make up 7% of the entire notification area. Now, there are other people that signed the petition which are here, which you can use in making your decision. But for a supermajority vote as per state law, we only go by the notification area. But is your prerogative?
So my question is just to make sure that I'm remembering correctly. Has this property tried to redo this before and built something before and they were in opposition? Is this the property that keeps trying to get?
No, the one, I think, the one you're talking about is on 3rd, on Davis and 3rd, Mr. Moody.
Okay. No, that's, no. No, and Mr. Moody's on a different area. But this particular property, though, the first time it's come up?
First time.
Okay.
So how many people signed a petition against this? You flashed it up there rather quickly.
I think you said there were 14.
I'm sorry. You said 14? Okay. Yeah, I see it says 14. Okay. You know, I'm the kind of guy that when, you know, rarely does anybody oppose anything. But when 14 people sign up and say, we're against this, I believe I should listen to the people.
Yes, and that's your prerogative, so that you can, if you want to deny the rezoning based on the petition, that's your prerogative to do that.
Out of those 14, you said that there was only three property owners within the line?
Within the notification area, yes.
And going from mobile home to the residential is actually an improvement?
Well, I mean, so the zoning is mobile home district, so potentially a mobile home could be placed in the property. But it's, the existing building is not a mobile home.
Correct.
But it could be turned down, and a brand-new mobile home could be placed there. So the proposal is to have a duplex. So those are the things to consider.
A duplex with a pad?
Excuse me?
On a concrete pad, not a mobile home duplex?
Yes. If the zoning goes through, it will be a building with a foundation.
Okay. And for everybody here, is R1 residential or retail?
R1 is a single-family residential. But apparently, there was a business, there was a business there for many years.
Okay. So you said, how many people within the dotted line?
Three. One, two, three.
Three people out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, yeah, 10. So that's 30% of the people then opposed.
No. Well, I mean, if you go by the number of properties, yes. But if you go by area, it's 7%.
Right. But if you go, yeah. So 30% of the people within that 200-feet line opposed it. And then did the other 70% of those people say yes? Go ahead and do it?
Well, none of this, they just didn't, the petition didn't?
So there were no affirmatives. There were 30% negatives.
Yeah, 30, yeah. The three, these three people signed a petition in opposition.
And I don't know if you got copied, Commissioner, on the emails, but that was one of the arguments in the, in the tread was, just because they didn't write about it, because they didn't have an opportunity to go to a meeting or whenever the meeting was held, doesn't mean they're not in opposition. They just didn't have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Well, let's go to the public hearing now, since we have two people who have signed up to speak on this issue. So I'll open the public hearing and call on Mr. Andy Cruz. Mr. Cruz, you signed up to speak on this matter. Telephone? Okay.
He wants to be called? Do I need to call him or he's here?
She indicated in the back that, if you want to bring that, you have a phone number for him if you want to bring it up. Ms. Alessandra will give him a call.
You have to raise your hand. Thank you. This is Amanda Lison, the city secretary with the City of Harlingen. And you signed up to speak on item number four, rezoning of the 1605 North 7th Street. And we're in the public hearing now. So you have two minutes, and once your two minutes come up, I will let you know. You may start now.
Okay. The reason I'm not for it is because it raises a lot of crime in the area. My house has been broken into, and there's been other incidences where kids were caught that were from the area, back in that area where they have mobile homes. And I feel like if it's rental properties, it raises the crime in the area. And so we've had a, even the houses that have come up for rent here locally, one of the houses was used as a stash house. And so people that really don't own a place, you know, they have nothing to lose if they get in any kind of trouble. And that's the kind of people that get attracted to places that, you know, are rented out because they don't have, um, nothing to lose as far as, you know, what they leave behind or whatever. And so, but, I mean, as neighbors here, we try to, you know, look out for each other. And some of those kids have been caught. And the one kid that broke into the vehicle that I had in my house, that was his sixth time that he had been caught breaking into vehicles. And so that's my main concern as far as having any apartment complex or any kind of rental properties is that it's going to attract the wrong kind of people. Right now, it's dealing, it could be drugs, you know, since the school is right there.
Mr. Cruz, your two minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then Ms. Alma Arce signed up, but I don't, it says she does not want to be, she does not want to speak. Ms. Arce, do you want to speak?
I'm going to make it.
Please, you may. Please come forward if you do.
Good afternoon, Alma Arce. I live in the subdivision that is in question right across the street. I do have a change. The petition that was signed, I was able to get an additional homeowner to sign, and they are in that zone, which is that one in the corner. So we do have another person that is indicating that they do not want this ahead. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. The first area right next across the street from the R1, the R1 that is across the home that is going to be changed, that's the only homeowner that actually lives in his home. Everybody else from the MH down, they all have renters. So we couldn't get them to sign the petition because those are not the homeowners, so we couldn't get secure, secure that information. I do have the amended petition here, so if anybody wants that, I can hand that off to whoever needs to get that.
Javier, would you take that from her, please?
I do want to say that we are all opposed to having this spot zoning variance. The classic definition is that it's a singling out of a parcel for the sole benefit of the owner that is requesting the change. And that's exactly what's going to happen in this area. The individual would change it from a mobile home residential one to duplex, and the only benefit is going to be to them increasing the money that they receive. The other individuals from MH down would potentially see that change and change their designation as well, changing the environment. So you're asking us to approve the change on the one that's going to affect the neighborhood. And there's no way anybody in that subdivision that I've spoken to is willing to accept that change. So I hope you'll take that into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning request? Yes, please, ma'am, please come to the podium and state your name and give us your residence address.
Yes. Hello.
And you'll have two minutes, okay?
Norma Linnam, Colm Street, 1160 Colm Street in San Benito. I am the applicant along with?
Barry Olin.
Barry, yes. And we're the ones who are trying to turn this into a duplex. Yes, it is mobile home. I think we could really make this place look really beautiful. It's not the first time we've done that. We have pictures that we can show you of homes that we've done just like this. We've turned them into beautiful. We have pictures that we can show you of homes that we've done just like this, we've turned them into beautiful homes. It's not the first time that we've done it here in Harlingen. And wouldn't you rather see a beautiful home there than just another mobile home? I know the speaker that called in said there was crime in the mobile homes, and they caught those people there in the mobile homes. This will not be a mobile home, it's going to be a beautiful duplex. If you'd like to see pictures of the ones that we've done and how the house looked before, and how we turned it into a beautiful, beautiful home that will beautify the neighborhood, we, we do have that available for y'all. Really, that's all I can say, unless you want to say something.
I mean, I can answer questions, you know, we've been doing this for years. I have a remodeling company since 2002, and we've picked up several homes from San Benito, Brownsville, and we've come back to Harlingen because Harlingen seems to work better with us. And we make them, we updated them a hundred percent, and we go by the code. I mean, we go, we get permits and everything, you know, and we go by the code, so it's nothing, nothing new to us. We've done this for years, and I think this is a good opportunity in that area since it's in front of the school.
Also, that lot hasn't been sold, it's been like that, run down for years. You'll continue to see it like that, unless someone does something.
Can, can we show you guys some pictures?
We have.
For y'all? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning request? Is there anyone? Okay, hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance permitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential mobile home MH District to residential duplex R2 District for a 0.572-acre tract being all of Lot 6 and 0.113-acre out of Lot 7, JH West subdivision located at 1605 North Seventh Street. Applicants Mario Anormal and out.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a motion by anyone to adopt the ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, the motion carries. Thank, right? How many was that? There were two opposed. Uribe had... You have a supermajority, right?
No.
No, you don't, okay. So then, yeah, you have a majority. Two opposed, Uribe and, and Mesmar. All right, item five, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R1 District to residential duplex R2 District for Lot 1, Block 1, Harlingen Expressway subdivision, section 3, located at 1202 North T Street. Application Maria Victoria Laredo.
Mayor, this is a similar request to the, to the previous one, but in, in this one, no, no petition has come in, and as of now, nobody has been in opposition to this rezoning from single-family residential to duplex zoning. This is at the corner of T Street and Lafayette. This is the aerial photo, this is kind of an older neighborhood, it's an industrial area to the, to the west. Apparently, the property had a mechanic shop for many years, even though the zoning is single-family residential. It was, clearly, there was a mechanic shop there for many years. And that's the photo of the property showing the, the old mechanic shop that is stopped up operations. And Ms. Laredo recently acquired the property, and she would like to build a duplex at the site. And that's the zoning, it's all single-family residential to the north and south and east, and industrial to the west.
So can I ask you a question right there? How does, how does, how is that allowed to happen? You go back to the previous line?
The mechanic shop...
How is that allowed to happen? If, 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 if they're not supposed to be doing business like that?
It could have been that it was there before the zoning ordinance, I'm not sure.
Okay, because I'd like to know the answer to that.
I can look into it.
If somebody's doing business and it's like, nobody bothers them, if they're, if they're in a, in a neighborhood, and they're not doing business property...
He was a good mechanic, and the, the neighborhood liked him. I can, I can look into it, I can look into it, Commissioner.
So it's okay for him not to do the right thing?
Well, I think what probably happened...
No, I mean, that, you brought it up, so that, does that mean you would look away and let him do his thing?
What probably happened, he was there before the zoning ordinance.
Okay, but I, I'd like to get that answered.
Yes, we can, we can find out.
Because, because that comment makes me think, maybe, did you know the guy, or, you know?
No.
Is that the door you operate?
No.
Okay, because that's unfortunate.
But it's something that you didn't know?
No.
And, and that, in that picture on the right, is that, is that part of the property, that house is, that's in the back?
No, it's, the house in the back is a separate property.
Okay, so then, like you'd said, the, the mechanic operated there before we, the ordinance was changed?
But Frank, if you look at the property, it's not like he's doing it hidden either.
No, I know, but that, but the, the point, to his point, it was something that was done before the city had changed the ordinance to residential.
So to my question is, code enforcement, do they not routinely monitor the city? Are they not looking at, at neighborhoods, or they not? I mean, surely, we had some kind of incident that they had to go out there for something.
My guess is that mechanic shop was, was there before the zoning ordinance, because otherwise, how would they get a building permit for, for something like that?
But he's no longer there.
Did they even ask for a permit, right?
Well, it's a, it's a building with a foundation.
Because like you say, maybe he knew somebody, right? Maybe, maybe the, the guy who issued the permits didn't, didn't, didn't require him to go permit, right?
I can look into it and, and try to find the history.
We'll get some answers for you, Commissioner.
Okay, Javier, are you, are you through with your presentation? Or you, you're not, right? You need to continue.
Yes, I'm finished.
Please, please continue.
And planning and zoning commission considered the request and recommended approval. Because there's no, there's no opposition.
All right. That concludes your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the public hearing then, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? If you, please come forward and, and come to the podium and you, just state your name and your residence address, and you'll...
My name's Paris Cox, my address is night, 19283 FM 508, just outside of Combs. It's easy fix on that one, all you got to do is get on CCAD, Cameron County Appraisal District, and it'll tell you when that building was built. And that'll tell you if it was built within the timeframe of when it was rezoned. That's an easy fix.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the rezoning? All right, hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B and ask the cap, ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance permitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 District to residential duplex R2 District for Lot 1, Block 1, Harlingen Expressway subdivision, section 3, located at 1202 North T Street. Application Maria Victoria Laredo.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item six, it's a public hearing to consider an ordinance, ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R1 District to residential multifamily M2 District for 15.99 acres out of Block 5, 7, and 9, Stewart Place subdivision, located on northeast corner of Stewart Place Road and Brenneman Street. Application is Ambiotech Group, Cara Raúl Villanueva.
Yes, Mayor, this is at the northeast corner of Stewart Place Road and Brenneman Road, it's out, south of the expressway. It's a vacant property. And that's the aerial photograph, the purple, the developer is proposing garden homes and duplexes in, in Block 9. That's a photo of the property. The zoning is a single-family residential with commercial zoning to the north. Land use plan is called for low, low-density residential. It's a, Stewart Place is a collector roadway in the Thorfer Plan, which can handle the additional traffic. This went before planning and zoning commission, and they recommended approval unanimously with a 5-0 vote. No one, no one spoke in opposition.
Okay, I'll go to the public hearing. Is there one, anyone here who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Is there anyone? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance permitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 District to residential multifamily M2 District for 15.99 acres out of Blocks 5, 7, and 9, Stewart Place subdivision located on the northeast corner of Stewart Place Road and Brenneman Street. Application Ambiotech Group, Cara Raúl Villanueva.
Okay, is there any, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item eight, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Lifeline Heart of Worship to lease the Harlingen Municipal Auditorium beginning May 8, 2022, until April 30, 2023.
Sir, you skipped seven?
I think we're going to number seven. I think, I think we skipped number seven.
Item seven.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Item seven, public, a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the existing special use permit issued to Jesus Penya for an adult business in the general retail GR district to allow the expansion of Serves Martini Lounge located at 309 West Van Buren Avenue, bearing the legal descriptions, Lot 7 and 8, Block 67, Harlingen Original Townsite subdivision, applicant Jesus Penya. Javier?
Mayor, this is an existing bar in the downtown area called the Serves Lounge, and they've been very successful, and they would like to expand the bar. So this is, this is where they are now, and they would like to expand to 311 and, and double in, in size. Staff recommends approval, limited to one year, hours of operation Monday through Wednesday, 3:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Thursday and Saturday, 3:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Sundays, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Provision of security officer during peak hours, Thursday through Saturday, 9:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Video surveillance, 30-day retention, adequate lighting, proper state permits, and compliance with the smoking ordinance, and all, compliance to the requirements from the different city departments. This went before the planning and zoning commission, no one spoke in opposition, and they recommended approval unanimously, subject to the list of conditions.
All right, let's go to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning, or this special use permit, rather?
Hello, my name is Jesus Penya, 201 West Fillmore, Harlingen. I am the owner of Serves Martini Lounge, and I am requesting for your approval for the expansion. Two and a half years ago, when we opened, we had no idea that it would be as successful as it's been. We are currently, we were interviewed as one of the best bars in the valley. So I, I mean, I think for Harlingen, that's, that's a pretty good thing, or for the valley. So I ask that you all please approve this expansion. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Carmina Penya Mojdehi, 1460 North Bowie, and I have the proof here.
Thanks.
He's being interviewed by Katie Holmes and Channel 4, which I guess is all burning, and it's for the best part.
Well, Mr. Penya, I'd like to mention that, you know, I remember that property when you took it over. And I'm, you know, as a business owner myself, I, you know, I thought you were nuts. But, but whoever handles your decor is very eclectic. I mean, that takes a certain talent, certain skill set, and you've really done well. And, and people don't realize how hard of a business that is. And then, and then to suffer, you know, go through the pandemic and, and do that, and to see you thrive and to bring that to downtown, I really applaud you, because that's some really hard work, so congratulations.
Okay, is there, is... Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against the SUP?
I just wanted to say something about this new business expansion. I'm the owner of the two blocks over there, close to the new business, Martini Bar. And I have questions about the safety of the people that live close to the place where they wanted to expand. Are they gonna protect those people that live there? Because there's business there, but there are some people that live there too. And about parking lot, if it is going to be enough parking lot for all the business right there in Van Buren.
Two minutes are up.
Okay.
And that's, that's my question that I have, just to protect the people for that business, to protect the residents that live there. And, and for, to be enough parking lot for everybody, for the businesses there. And then, to be no fights, you know, for, for parking, and then, because a few times, people, you know, they're aggressive when they drink, sometimes they throw stuff into the, to the neighbors, like glass bottles and stuff like that. We just want, like, if something like that happens, we go to the owner of the business, and we can work it out for, for them to take care of the situations. And to, for us to come together, to take care of the people that gets, you know, like drunk and come outside, and that they don't go and destroy nothing to the, and, and to the other side. I can barely speak English, I'm sorry.
I think we probably, well, actually, I'm not, I, I think we, you set the two minutes on the lady before, and you didn't, and we didn't restart it on, on her. But I think probably by now, you've used your two minutes, so...
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so if you want to wrap it up?
Okay, so now...
If you have anything else you want to say, just finish, finish up.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right, is there, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this special use permit?
Yes, my name's Raymond Reyes, I've known Jesse for probably maybe 45 years, since we had moved down to the valley back and forth. I think it's a good thing what Serves is doing. We, at our particular location, have been there since 1976. What he's done, like the commissioner stated, is a, is a big improvement. It's a very well, well-done, and I think it's a good thing for the expansion. And we really haven't had issues like we did way, way, way back in the day. A lot of things have changed down there, and I think that he's bringing another positive aspect. And to get noticed like that is, is a big plus for Harlingen, you know, and I hope other businesses are recognized because, you know, there's a lot of good things here in Harlingen that just seem to be showcased a little bit more. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this specific use permit?
Good evening, I came in for one thing and I end up doing something else now. My name's Elaine Flores. It's so easy for us to criticize what the commission, the mayor and the commissioner are doing, but I think in this case, well, in all, in everything, it's the people that need to take the responsibility of contributing to the community. And when we say the word "bar," we have a negative connotation to it. But in this case, I honestly believe that this is an upscale bar, okay? And this is exactly what Harlingen needs, especially downtown Harlingen needs. It's an improvement in that side of town. And they have really done an awesome, awesome job. It's, I mean, I hate to say this, it sounds terrible, but it's the type of professional people that they're bringing into the bar. It is a very, very different from, as it was said earlier, the type of bars that used to be there. And as far as, I can see from what they're saying, they're adding security, they're adding other things that... what they're saying, they're adding security, they're adding other things that address the concern of this lady, of the protection, the crime element, and all of that, I think they're addressing it, and I think Sir's extending is awesome, I think the recognition they've received is very well-merited, and I think if you all would be in favor of it, it's in addition to downtown Harlingen growing, as so many of us in the city of Harlingen are expecting for Harlingen to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the specific use permit?
Jesus Penia, 201 West Fillmore, to address the young lady's concerns, we do have off-duty officers that work the weekends, Fridays and Saturdays, so we haven't had one issue there at the lounge. HPD also does their, their, their routine checks, I mean, they've, they've been in there, we've never had an issue, so, I mean, I don't foresee any, any issues coming up with the expansion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Penia.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone, anyone else who'd like to speak for or against?
I have one more thing to add. Also, as far as residents, there's only one home that is directly to the right, and that's the only place that hosts a person that's renting there, everything else is business, and from my understanding, there shouldn't be any people living in those businesses. So there's only one resident that we know of. And then, as far as the parking, there is the city parking, which is right across the street to the left side of the business, so there's plenty of parking.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak for or against this SUP? Okay, hearing now, we'll close the public hearing now, and go to item B and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
This is still seven?
Seven, yeah.
Yes. In ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, issue, to issue an amendment to the existing special use permit, ordinance 2019-12 to Jesus A. Penia to allow the expansion of a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 309 West Van Buren bearing a legal description of lots seven and eight, block 67 Harlingen Original Townsite, subject to the conditions outlined in the body of the ordinance.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, any other discussion?
I just wanted to reiterate what Richard said, is I've been to Jesse's establishment several times, many times, and I, and I think it is a great thing that you've done there at Sir's, the atmosphere, the decorations, everything, and I, I strongly agree with the lady just said, that you've helped revitalize that area, and the only complaint I had about your location was it wasn't big enough, and you're doing that right now, and I just want to congratulate you on this-
I thought you said you wanted tacos.
Huh?
You wanted to make tacos, have them in the kitchen.
That too, no, but, the only, the only, but I congratulate you on this, I think you're doing a wonderful job, and I'm looking forward to how the new expansion's going to look, and I'm happy for you, congratulations.
All right, any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Penia, again, congratulations on the success of your business, and we're, we're very proud to have it in our downtown. It's a great addition, thank you.
Jesse, the mayor's gonna take us there after the meeting, just so you know. Big table.
Okay, all right, now, we can go to item A, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Lifeline Heart of Worship to lease the Harlingen Municipal Auditorium beginning May 8, 2022 until April 30th, 2023, for an amount of $62,900. Josh?
Good evening, mayor commissioners, we're asking the allows to enter to an agreement with Lifeline Heart of Worship, this will be for one year, for a total amount of $62,900. The monthly rate is $1,200, times the 48 times you'll be using it, is $57,600, plus there's a concession fee of $100, $100 times 48 times you can be using, total of $4,800. That brings to $62,400 plus the $500 deposit, total to $62,900. We recommend approval of this.
Mayor, one of the, one of the differences in this lease is that he is by far our largest renter of the auditorium, and so what he's asking to do is to leave his equipment there when it's not in use, and if we happen to rent out the auditorium, that he would move his equipment, and we just have to call him. So we would create a, an agreement that says we would not be responsible for any loss of equipment or damage to it when it's there, and he's not using the building, that would be the only difference between this particular lease and any other lease we would have with anybody else.
Very good, anybody have any questions about this?
Yeah, this, I'm guessing, this will be on Sundays?
Yes, sir, it's on Sundays.
From what time to what time?
I don't know the time.
More or less.
The applicants here, I think, I think you wanted to speak as well.
Yes, please come forward and-
Good evening, Commissioner, good evening, ma'am. Thank you. So service times, we usually have three services in San Benito, here we would only have two services, we'd probably get there as early as seven or eight, and then probably leave later than, what, 12, one, two, three, so it's within the 10-hour limit that usually is the rental agreement. The, the question I had is, I saw the, on the notes, is that the date is wrong, though. It, it's still a year, but it actually wouldn't start till August of this year, because I've already spoken with Philium Stephanie, they already have some, some reservations there, so we didn't want to start till August, and then it carried over until June of next year. That being said, we're in a building project on Grimes, we're the people that own the former Teachers Credit Union and the property in front of it, and so we're only seeking the auditorium for the sake of, until we build, so we're hoping that after this year, we're willing to, I don't know if the city manager mentioned this or not, we're willing to pay that upfront, we've got no problem with that, we're not, we don't, we don't want any handouts or anything like that. Over $400,000 has come into the city through our nine-year lease with the auditorium, we just look to keep doing business with you all, we just want some freedom and some stability to be able to come in and out in that field, and we're kind of trapped in a box. We have a 2,000-member church, and we're just looking to keep growing, sir.
Okay, anybody have any other questions, do you need to, do we need to make the note of that change in the dates, or?
I, I think, Mayor, the only, the only really issue we wanted to have the commission address was the fact that he would leave his equipment there, but that we would come up with a separate agreement that would not hold us accountable for any, any loss or, or damage to the equipment.
Yeah, because the issue, I think, was the, the labor it takes to tear down and then build it back up when there's no need, if there's not, if, if, if the building's not being occupied, it makes no sense, and, and I, and I think the fact that they, they leased the, the auditorium for nine years prior, never had an issue, it's obviously a great congregation, they do a lot of good in our community, and the, and then obviously, as long as we have clear communication of, if, if an event comes in, they have, we give them a notice, they, and they do have to remove their stuff, and they remove it at the time that they need to, I think that's, I think that's a, that's a, that's a fair, that's a reasonable-
Sorry, inter, commissioner, is the liability issue, sir, we have a, we have our own insurance, and we cover all the property, so we would have no problem with doing any of that, that's what we used to do, that's what we do right now in San Benito. To say about the date, my only concern is that, is that when we came in with Joel's on, on board, they would always tell us, you're gonna create some kind of seniority with us as we keep moving forward, but we kept getting pushed out, and so that's why I'm, I'm wondering if paying in advance for a year, I checked with Miss Stephanie, she can verify, they literally have nothing from August of this year to next year, there's really no reason to bump us out, I mean, that, that's my main concern, is because it's very hard to just kind of pack up and go, or move, we were using the Casa de Amistad to fix that sometimes, we would go to MMA, we would go outdoors to our Grimes building, we just want some stability, and like I said, we're willing to pay for it, we've got no problem with it, it's not like we're asking for a free Sunday.
Mayor, we don't normally bring contracts to the commission for use, but I think we can acknowledge that the dates that he requested are available, and we'll make those available to him through the contract.
Yeah, Mayor, if the, if the board, if the commission wished to approve this, they could approve it subject to another agreement where they would have sole responsibility and provide insurance for-
We're just authorizing, the action is to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract.
For a year, yes.
Okay, and with the circumstances which have been described, and you, and you will work the details of the contract out?
Yes, sir, I've already talked to Mark about that.
Okay, is there a motion to-
Most of them approve.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you, consider, and item number nine is consideration of possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the city of Harlingen and the TYF A Wolf Pack to use one of the fields at the Wilson Sports Complex and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, commissioners, so we're bringing this item to the commission to see if we can get them approved for a temporary facility usage agreement. What happened is Tyfa is requesting to use the open fields at the Harlingen Sports Complex, they do have the required insurance, the Parks Advisory Board in 21 had approved them for a facility use agreement, we were made aware that they did not have their 501(c), not-for-profit, so they rescinded the agreement September 2021. Since then, Tyfa Youth has submitted their applications for their 401(c), so they're just pending to receive that, so what was recommended by the Parks Advisory Board was that we would allow them to hold practices at those fields up until August, I think was the date that we gave them, because their, six months is usually what it takes for them to receive the 501(c), so that's what we're recommending, is to allow them to use for practices, and then for any organized games or tournaments, they would still continue to rent the facilities at Victor Park from the Parks Department.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, what's TYFA?
Tyfa.
Texas Youth Football Association.
Yeah, it's the Texas Youth Football Association.
Okay, so this will be football?
It's a football, yeah.
Not soccer football, but football.
Yes.
Why did it take so long to apply and get this 501(c)? What's the holdup?
The holdup, well, originally, David mentioned that they weren't aware that they needed to have their 501(c) because Tyfa apparently as an organization has a 501(c) that they kind of blanket all of their, their different regions, but we needed one specifically for their organization, because they're gonna be based out of Harlingen, so that was, there was a bit of confusion between us and, between the department and between the Tyfa Youth.
And I think, I think that's, the, the permit comes from the Texas, or where do you get the permit?
Permit board.
For the, what he was talking about, why is-
The 501(c) is IRS.
Yeah, the 501(c).
So we submit for it, and there's a six-month waiting period until they can get approval, so that's why we're waiting for August, so we can get that approval, so we submitted our tracking numbers, and all of these, you can look up our application through the website, but they're all in pending status.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to form a 501(c)(3) with a nonprofit corporation, but it is increasingly difficult to get the IRS designation. It is really getting, it's really getting, it's really getting hard, yeah.
So that's why we would recommend that we give them to August, because that would mean seven months, which usually it's six months period for them to get it.
Okay, yeah.
Of course, yes.
Anybody have any other questions about this?
How long have you had the football team? So, we've been operating, I've been operating within the city of Harlingen, David Gonzalez, 702, you guys, but I've been operating in the city of Harlingen with the youth for 14 years now, we opened our organization five years ago, and we've been here in the city of Harlingen, now previously, we don't charge for our practices or anything like that, so we would operate in the parks and open spaces, you know, wherever the open spaces were, we'd show up, have our practices, and when we had game days, we would go into contracts with the city of Harlingen and pay for, you know, Victor Park or whatever field that we were gonna be renting out. This year, apparently something changed within the parks, that open spaces need contracts to practice on, so we're actually the very first org that's being asked for this, so I'm sure a lot more's gonna be coming to you, because over all these years, all the coaches in the area that work with the youth, we just kind of go to the park with our teams, we practice, and when we need to rent something to play, we would, you know, go to the city and rent the facilities from you guys. But with this going forward, we've always been in close contact with them, so when we found out this was going on, we're like, okay, well, what do we need to do to make sure that we're operating properly inside the city, because we've never had any issues or problems with it. Is this the only team that has issues?
No, sir.
No, we're just the only ones we told.
Do you mean as far as-
This 501(c)(3), is he the only one that has issues with us, getting the, the acceptance from the IRS? In other words, do the other teams that are, that have teams out here in Harlingen, that are practicing, they're playing in Harlingen, do they all have this 501(c)(3)?
Yes, sir. If they have a facility usage agreement with the Parks Department, yes.
With the exception of him?
Yes, sir.
Now, if I can speak real quick, so what he's saying, with the facility usage agreement, yeah, there is 501(c), but there's a whole lot of teams that operate in Harlingen that use the open spaces that aren't asked or being required to hold it, but we're being told in order to operate, we need the facility agreement, like, in other words, we can't use the park unless we have it.
May, may I ask why we're asking teams to, if they're practicing on public property and not holding a game, if they're just using the facility for what it was intended for, why are we asking them to get a permit?
As far as teams that are using open spaces?
Correct.
We don't ask them to get, to have a 501(c) unless they're having organized activities, so if they're connecting, if they're collecting any kind of money, if they're having organized practices as an actual organization, if they're having scrimmage games, or if they're hosting games. The thing that happened is that we, we received a report that they were out, that the Tyfa Youth was holding a, what'd you guys call it, a sports camp or a football camp, and they were issuing free haircuts, registering kids for their program, so at that point, they're hosting, they're holding a business.
So what's the difference between that and a athletic trainer, or personal trainer, taking people out to the parks and working them out, giving them a routine, and collecting money?
The, the-
Hold on, I want to know that.
As far as you, you're asking-
What is the difference between that?
There shouldn't be, there's no difference, they should also be required to have a 501(c), the only thing is the policing of it, it's a little-
There's several people that do that, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's tough to police.
And, and I don't think we're asking them for a 501(c), right?
When it gets brought to our attention, yes.
So, I, you know, the parks, I mean, that's, that's what, I mean, even when we played sports, you, you almost make it, I, I understand the fields, or, you know, whether it's National Bronco, Texas Bronco, because those fields, you know, that, that's game day, that's, that's a whole different thing, but, but even our schools, you know, Travis Elementary, Zavala, all those places have people practicing and doing that stuff, that's what, that's what I think our city should provide, I don't think we should be asking them to do a permit, you know, as long as they're not trying to sue us for, for injury or stuff like that, I, I get that, but that, that's what the parks are built for, in my opinion.
Yeah, and we brought that to the Parks Advisory Board already, and that's the route that we're going, is to modify the policy, right, to where anything in open spaces, we reached out to several other cities as well to see kind of what it is that they do, and what, how do they go about dealing with open space, and-
Because it's almost impossible to police or be fair.
Right, and I think the reason we have these agreements is because it gives them exclusive use of the field, and right now, there's competing teams that want to have access to that field, we saw that with the soccer fields, and-
Man, I got dropped off at five o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning to go get a pavilion, when I was like eight years old, to make it so we could have a birthday party, and it was like first come, first served, right? Or we got dropped off at school, right? That's the way it was.
It's, there's, there's, there's confusion, there's, a, a team doesn't have to have a 501(c), the organization has to have it, so that's what we're talking about.
Right, yes, sir.
Not separate teams, that's what the point I was trying to make. So now we're making, we're asking for the organizations to come up with the 501(c), so it protects them and the city, so.
Yes, because that team is not affiliated with an, with an organization in the city that has a contract, correct?
Right.
Okay, yes, sir, would you, if you have something you'd like to-
Yes, sir, I'm actually with both the organizations, I'm with the Texas Youth Football Association, I'm also part of David's organization with the Wolf Pack. So as far as I know, I'm sure you can, and David Gonzalez is the only one of the youth sports that actually has up-to-date, that meets Harlingen standards, insurance?
No, that's not correct.
Because I know the soccer league doesn't, I know for a fact they don't.
They've already submitted their request, though they're just waiting to get it back, but they've updated their, they didn't have it because we changed the requirements.
David's had it, and it was the soccer team that, that did it, because he sits on the board of the Parks Reg.
But there's several other leagues, and they all have that, required insurance.
David is trying to do this correctly, and as part of Tyfa as well, we supply the insurance, we are the ones that gave him the insurance that lets it go above and beyond.
Okay.
Because he should state as well, David is practicing in an open space, it is not confined by fence, but on one side, and that is what is on the Wilson, so that, according to definition, is an open space. He's not asking for Victor Park, that is completely enclosed, he's asking for an open space. for an open space. All he's asking for, honestly, is your approval. In the city, he's already applied for his 501(c)(3). He's applied for everything that's been requested. They have tracking numbers that track it and can say, yes, it's in the process. And as Mr. Boswell stated, the IRS, anybody that's dealt with them knows, it's not fast.
This is just to approve an agreement, correct?
And this disagreement...
Right. And that, that's the only thing that's before us. We're not, you know, the poli, you know, overall policy, everybody else's status is not really before us. What's before us is, is whether we're going to approve this facility use agreement with TYFA.
And it gives them exclusive use of that field. That's what it's for.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for what you're doing with the kids out there. We appreciate that. Appreciate that. Item ten, consideration and possible action to reallocate the second round of American Rescue Plan Act twenty-twenty-one funding, expected to be received by mid-May twenty-twenty-two.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, I just want to go over a recap real quick of what, what's going to be happening in the next month or so. This is just a recap of what we did last year and the funding that we spent. To date, we've spent about four point seven million dollars. We still have about six point one million that needs to be spent, mostly on drainage projects. For this year, the city commission allocated ten million dollars for, for the waterworks, for infrastructure improvements. And they've started submitting billing for that, so that's going to start going out pretty soon. But what I wanted to talk about was another nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that we're going to be allocating to the city for revenue losses. Once we take that into the city, I would like in turn to allocate that money for a fire truck for the fire department. They're in desperate need of another one, well, they're in need of another one. And so I'd like to actually use that to actually place an order. The orders are running several months behind schedule, so I'd like to get that order as soon as we receive the funding.
Are we going to have another workshop to, to discuss these allocations and stuff or an update on that? Or can we have one?
That's up to the commission.
Because I'd like to discuss that ten million dollars that, that we approved for the waterworks.
We, we can. I, I would just ask the commission to...
Well, I mean, you can pull the commission. I, you know, I just, I just think it's something we need to revisit. And, and, and every, every, every dollar that, that we approve, I make sure that we spend it the right way and, and, and going forward of what, exactly what you just planned.
Right. Water and sewer projects are one of the eligible activities to use it on. It's, it's limited as to what you can use the, the funding on.
Right. Because, you know, I don't, and I know we've discussed this, where, you know, like the broadband stuff, you know, if, if a company like AT&amp;T's willing to do it for us, why would we spend the money? We can reallocate those grant monies in other places. Because my biggest issue with like a broadband thing, and if we bear the cost, we're going to bear the maintenance. And we don't have that kind of money, in my opinion, to, to see that long-term. So...
Right. Right now, we don't, right now, we don't have any money, aside for construction.
But we have, we spent money on a study.
Right.
To go into that direction.
Yes.
And then the ones, the, from my understanding, the ones that went in that direction, wish they didn't go in that direction, right? Those cities.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we had, we had ten, we had, I thought, agreed and, and taken action to allocate the ten million dollars to the waterworks for...
That, that was before I found out they put a bunch of money into a bank where they had extra cash.
But that was to, to, what the mayor's talking about, didn't we discuss that at the, the first...
At, at, the first allocation, yes. What, what we didn't talk about was the, the revenue losses and what that was going to be used towards. And that's what I wanted to...
I had a quick question. What are, what are the revenue, I don't understand, what, what's the revenue losses? What does that mean?
Those are because you weren't able to rent some of your facilities, because there was a downturn in the economy, you weren't able to get a lot of revenue. That's what that's for. I had to cover that.
Like, for example, the church that was here, they were renting out the auditorium. So we lost revenue when we shut the, when we shut the auditorium down by not being able to collect on that.
So that's going to be a, a funding source that's going to be given to the city. And so we can reallocate that to other sources, but they're only limited sources you can use that towards, and a fire truck is one of them. And so I'd, I'd like to do that.
How much is the fire truck?
They run about eight hundred to a million dollars, depending on what kind of features you want. So the majority of that money's going to go towards the fire truck. Now, we did send that information to Hollis Rutledge, so he knows that we're looking for one. But right now, as far as the, the infrastructure bill goes, I don't know if there's going to be funding for fire trucks, sir. But if there are, obviously, we can use this for something else. But I'm having any money allocated for that.
But we can still approve this and then make the changes later?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But this was just an update on the, on, on the nine sixty-three. The, the commission had already taken action on the ten million last year, so...
Okay.
So we can revisit it, right?
Yes, you can.
Some...
You can.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All, any other discussion?
Are you gonna, are you gonna outline the, where you plan on putting those revenue losses?
Yeah, fire truck.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just said it. I'm sorry.
Okay. All those in favor, any other discussion?
Gabe, right here, up here.
Oh, sorry.
I want to make sure that I understand this. Help me out. You want to take some of that ten million and apply that for a truck, fire truck?
No, no. The, the revenue losses, the nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Just that?
Just that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. All right. That's a, a good use of that money. All right. Item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of street bumps at the following streets. Trackstar Way between Bass Boulevard and Irrigation Ditch, Vista Fairly West, and Vista Fairly East, from Vista Fairly North to Murphy Drive, Beckham Road, between Drury Road and Kingsago Court, two hundred block of West Lincoln, four hundred block of West Taff, thirty-seven hundred block of Arroyo Vista Court, twelve hundred block of West Hayes, before the ninety degree turn.
These are streets that were submitted by two commissioners, so we can start the process of running our totals under the new ordinance that was adopted. So staff recommends approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
The only thing I wanted to point, point out was that I already spoke to Craig about, I'd already made this before I spoke to you. So the one we spoke to on the, which one was it? Beckham, right? Beckham. That's the only one that, I understood that they don't qualify because of they don't have the drainage ditches, correct?
Craig Hutt, Assistant City Manager for Externo Services. They don't have curbs and gutter.
Yes, that's what I meant. Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Any street, per the ordinance, any street that does not have curb and gutter won't qualify for a speed hump, because we don't want to encourage drivers to avoid the speed hump by driving down into the ditch.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that...
Pretty good policy.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item twelve, consideration and possible action to approve addition of Article Two, Section Two dash twenty-two, scheduling and the state of the city addressed to the Harlingen Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, are there some issues with that that I'd like to address? I'd like to ask that the meeting, that this should be tabled and brought back to the next meeting.
Okay. Motion to table.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, board appointments.
Amen.
I have one, Mayor. I inadvertently appointed Diana Sparsa to the Parks Advisory Board. She was already on there, but she meant to give me the name of the person that I want to appoint. So it'll be Nora Garcia, I believe. And I think she's already submitted her paperwork, so that'll be my only appointment.
I got one. Robert Lefwitch for Dr. Burke from the EDC.
Well, I think Dr. Burke still has a, still in the middle of her term, so you would have to remove, you would have to remove her.
I asked her. I did ask her.
Still have to remove, she's still in the middle of her term. You have to remove her. She hasn't resigned.
Then I make the motion to remove Dr. Burke from the EDC.
But that's not on the agenda. That's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Support a claim.
Down here, it's on the agenda. All right. There, there's a motion to remove Dr. Burke from the EDC board.
No, I, I don't understand why you would move, remove an educated, professional, active in the city from the EDC board.
Very simple.
Is there a second?
Second. Well, she was already okay with it, right?
Hmm?
Second.
No, no, she wasn't okay with it.
Well, according to Commissioner Morales, she's okay with it.
I didn't understand that. Is that a second?
Yes.
All right. Well, you know, this, you know, this idea of removing people prematurely, and she's in the middle of her term as chairman, removing people from their positions, I think is, you know, it has a chilling effect on people willing to step up and volunteer to serve on these boards. Because it's sort of a slap in the face, if you will, to be removed in the middle of your term. And I think that it's not something that we should make a practice of, removing people from the EDC board or any other board, for that matter, while they're still in the middle of a term. Dr. Burke is, you know, genuinely beloved by so many people in this community that I think it would be, set a bad precedent. So I would encourage you not to remove Dr. Burke from the board.
I agree with what you're saying about we shouldn't remove, you know, middle term, but I want to correct you. Actually, according to the website, the EDC, Dr. Burke's term ends actually next month in May. So she's not in the middle of her, her, her residency as, on the EDC or anything like that, that you're making it seem. And it is within Commissioner Morales's right to, it is his pick. And if he chooses to appoint someone else, that is his right. I understand that, Mike, I understand you don't like it because Robert Lefwitch was your opponent in the election, and you guys don't have a good relationship. But ultimately, it is his choice.
You know nothing about my relationship with anybody.
Ultimately, it is the commissioner's choice.
Don't put words in my mouth.
Ultimately, it's the commissioner's choice. And I think we've never, I don't think any of us have ever been opposed to any of your picks. So I think we should go ahead and just go ahead and approve, because it is his choice.
I just, I don't, I, I think you're wrong about her, about her term.
Actually, it's right here on the website. Feel free to look.
But, but I, you know, the records over at the EDC are apparently different.
Well, actually, because I, I think they've actually been doing a good job, because I appointed Rudy Martinez just recently, and they already updated his information on the website. So I think the, they're actually doing a good job on that. But again, maybe I am wrong, maybe you're right, but I'm just going by what the website is saying on the city website. And I think that's maybe something we should look into, Gabe, of, of making sure that all the, the appointments on the city website are updated, so we can see for sure, like, if it's updated or not.
All right. Is there a, any other discussion on this? All those in favor of removing Dr. Burke from the EDC board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. All right. Now, Commissioner, do you want to make your, make your appointment?
Yes, I would like to appoint Robert Lefwitch on the EDC board.
I, I have some, I have some difficulties with a man who cost the city over four hundred thousand dollars denying a business to open up at the airport and got entanglement with the FAA. And he has sued the city twice and has cost us close to another hundred thousand dollars. And I don't see why you would reward someone who sues the city and causes financial hardship to the taxpayers in the tune now of over a half a million dollars.
I would like to say that again, I understand you have personal feelings when it comes to Robert Lefwitch.
I don't have any personal feelings for Robert Lefwitch. You don't know me, and you don't know my soul. And don't you put any words in my mouth, Reno Perez.
I am not putting words...
You're being rude.
I'm not. I'm just standing up for a fellow commissioner.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Okay. We, all right. We have a second to the motion. Is there any other, is there any discussion? Well, all right. Okay. I guess we, you normally would do that. Did you have any board appointments?
No, I'm good.
All right. So the only board appointment is this one. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Item fourteen, executive close session regarding the following items. A, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point oh seven one, two, consult, consultation with legal counsel to receive legal advice and recommendation protected by the attorney-client communication privilege. And B, pursuant to Section five fifty-one point oh seven two, Government Code regarding the purchase and value of property for economic development and other purposes. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, there may be action on one of the items, and we'll come back after we're done consulting with our attorney. Thank you. Okay. We are out of executive session at seven-ten, and we're going to go to item fifteen, which is consideration and possible action on item fourteen-B as discussed in executive session. Is there a, a motion to authorize the city manager to proceed as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Good night.